Six thirty PM, and please ask you to rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes seven zero, and I would like to ask the mayor to come up and please swear in all the members. And, um, I think normally you stand there at the foot, yeah, you stand there and we just stay here. No, we'll stand. We'll stand, raise our hand. And our, and we also have a representative from the governor's office. I'm sorry, I do not know your names.
Okay, so, I have the, uh, Towne Cumberland has certified everyone here, and I have your certificates, so we'll hand those out afterwards. Uh, so, it's legal, everything's legal, you're into it whether you like it or not. Uh, so, on the oath of office, I really think everybody should stand, okay? And, raise your right hand. I state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and obey the laws of the United States of America, and the State of Rhode Island, and Providence Plantations, that I will in all respect observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the Towne Cumberland, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of School Committee. So, help me God. Okay, congratulations, you're in.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item on the agenda is this, is, um, the election of officers, and would anyone like to make any nominations?
Fiorello?
Yes.
Like to nominate Ray Salvatore as Chair?
Ray Salvatore, anyone who would like to second? Second by Mr. De Monica. Any other nominations? All in favor of Ray Salvatore as the chairperson of the Cumberland, uh, School Committee? Aye. Seven zero, Mr. Salvatore, I turn the, uh, meeting over to you.
Well, I think, um, it wouldn't be traditional if I said, "Thank you, Mr. Fiorello, or yo, yo, yo," so, thank you, Mr. Fiorello. I appreciate it. It's great to be up here. We're gonna continue with the meeting. We're gonna set the officers, we're gonna set some committees, and then get a little speech at the, uh, at the end. We wanna continue, uh, with our agenda. So, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna continue with the election of the officers, discussion or vote for the position of Vice Chair. Pleasure of the committee.
I'll nominate, uh, Mr. Denon.
Mr. Denon has been nominated. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. De Monica. All in favor? The ayes have it. Mr. Denon, I'm sorry, second by Mr. Hess. All in favor, we got the ayes have it, seven zero. Mr. Denon, welcome to the role as Vice Chair. We're gonna keep you busy.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, I apologize, I just wanted to make sure I get everybody's last name, so, correctly. Yes. Well, let's move to appoint to the clerk, which, we've had this discussion, and we're going to appoint Amy Gugan, Gugan? I'm sorry, I, I've, Goggin, I'm sorry, I'm bad on last names. Mrs. Goggin is going to be our clerk. So, welcome. We're gonna have Mr. Denon, uh, fill you in on exactly what the capabilities of the job and how it to do. It's, so, I know Mr. Denon complained that it was strenuous, but it's actually pretty easy, so. All right, the next item, welcome. The next item on the agenda is the subcommittees. Uh, discussion and/or, uh, vote for the subcommittee. So, I reached out to everybody on the committee in regards to the subcommittees, and we do have several, and we also have, uh, existing liaison committees as well that serve a purpose on this board. The first one is the policy. So, uh, Mr. Denon and Mr. Fiorello, these are appointed, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, the policy, we have Mr. Fiorello, we have Mr. Denon, and we have Mr. Hess on our policy committee. That will be chaired by Mr. Fiorello. Okay? Thank you. The achievement is going to be chaired by Mr. Denon. Other committee members are gonna be Amy and Karen as well, so, welcome. Unfiscal is gonna maintain, Mr. Paul De Monica is chairing, and Mark and Steve Hess are also gonna be on that committee also. We have a liaison to the Town Council, Mr. Mayor, and that is going to be Karen. Karen's gonna be our liaison to the Town Council. We also have two other, uh, three other liaison committees, but before I get to that, we also have an appointment to the District Safety Committee. Last year, this was, uh, sat by two people, it was Mark and Paul, and they're gonna remain on that committee. Um, so, you guys did a nice job last year, last couple years, so we're gonna keep that going. Liaison to the High School Student Council, this is a new appointment. Uh, I spoke to Superintendent about this, Mr. Mitchell, uh, some other members of the committee as well, and last year, or early in the year, we had the Student Council come in in regards to the dress code and policy, and they had raised some concerns about the interaction between their council and our council, so I think, or our, our committee. So, I think it's important to put somebody in that role, so, uh, Mr. Fiorello's gonna take that role. He'll report back, he'll be the liaison between the student government and with us. Two other liaisons, there's a liaison to the One Socket Career and Technical Center, that's also gonna be Karen as well, and the liaison to the Beacon Charter School is gonna be myself. And, the two other boards that I will be on is gonna maintain, uh, Chair of the Health and Wellness Committee, and also the Business Advisory Board. So, that's what we have. So, I welcome everybody, uh, to this committee, and at this point, I'd like to open it up for any questions by anybody on the board. All right, any comments from the public at this point? No? It's quiet. Well, again, yes. Mr. Mitchell, please.
Just a couple of things, on be, on behalf of the students and staff of the Cumberland School System, I wanna welcome all of the members, the members of the school committee, and a special welcome to our, our brand-new members. We really look forward to working with all of you. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Uh, I'd like to say that I, I ended up finding my list of everybody's last name, so, I, I apologize, um, Mrs. Friedman, so, all right. Mr. Fiorello, please.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Earl Wood for the time that he spent on the school committee. It wasn't an easy job for him to come in in the middle and kind of, uh, wrap things up with us for the last several months. Um, and I just felt that he was owed a, you know, some gratitude.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the last, uh, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Now, you know what it was, it was stuck in my head that you had started this meeting as the Chair, so. Um, there's one more item that I need to discuss. There's appointments to the liaison to each of the schools within Cumberland. So, what I did, I, we main, maintained, uh, I, to be consistent with what we've always done in the past, if you, if any committee members have a child in that school, you are the liaison to that school, and then I assigned you another school. So, I'll go through those appointments later on when we're, uh, when we're an executive, we don't need to go through all of that. And, open it up again, questions from the public? All right, so this meeting has come to an end. Mr. Fiorello?
Motion to adjourn.
Second by Mr. Denon, all in favor? Ayes have it. Thank you, everyone. That was a mess. I'd like to call this meeting, um, chew water. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and the God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. Welcome to the first meeting of the new committee members. Oh, the, yeah, that's true, the second, second meeting. Um, all right, I need approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee. Motion to approve from Mr. Denon. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorello, all in favor? Aye, ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is the Student Government, Student Activities Report. And I see a couple ladies here. If you could introduce yourself, please.
Good evening. I am Serena Fox, Student Government Vice President, and this is Lexi Evers, Student Government Secretary. For the month of November, um, as you know, on November 4th, the first quarter closed. Next, on November 15th, we have our first Student Government Meeting, which be, will be held in the cafeteria at six PM. Following that, on November 17th, we have the Junior Ring Ceremony, which will be led by the junior class officers. And then, throughout October 31st to November 22nd, we have Turkey Baskets, where food and money contributions are being collected for those in need for Thanksgiving, and Student Government will prepare approximately 120 baskets and deliver to them, and deliver them to those in need. And finally, on November 12th and 13th, this weekend, we will be canning at Stop &amp; Shop for Turkey Basket to collect donations. As far as the month of December goes, on the 6th, we have an open house and a student showcase in which Student Government will have a presence to help in, help welcome in new students. On the 19th, we have our monthly Student Government Meeting. From December 1st through the 19th, we're participating in Adopt a Family, in which the Student Government members will donate gifts and money, um, and then put them together to deliver to families in need. And then, from December, uh, 22nd through January 2nd, we have school vacation.
Excellent, thank you, ladies. Any questions from the committee members? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Approval of Minutes. Looking for approval on the regular meeting, 10/27/2016. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Fiorello made a motion to approve. Do I have a second by Mr. Denon, all in favor? Ayes have it, seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is the Approval of Minutes for the Executive Session of 10/27. Pleasure of the committee? Motion to approve by Mr. Denon and Mr. Fiorello, do I have a second?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Mr. Fiorello withdrew his motion, is now made a motion for a second. Mr. Adams, did I get this right? Okay. All in favor? Ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is the Enrollment Report. Mr. Mitchell?
I believe you have the updated enrollment report.
Just the approval, okay.
Uh, in your, so, I, I move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do I have a, a motion? Move, motion to approve by Mr. Denon, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorello, all in favor? Ayes have it. Moving forward, the School Police Report. Pleasure of the committee. Motion to approve by Mr. Fiorello, do I have a second? By Mr. Denon, all in favor? Ayes have it, seven to zero. Last item on the Consent Agenda is the Residency Truancy Report. Pleasure of the committee. Motion to approve by Mr. Denon, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorello. Let me just say, for the new cons, uh, new committee members here, these reports will be, um, in your, yep, will be on the, within your, uh, your folders, and, so, okay. Uh, all in favor? Ayes have it, seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Mitchell, is the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I, I just wanted to give you a quick update on two important initiatives that are underway. Uh, one is, as you all know, strategic planning. We had a strategic planning session on Saturday, led by Dr. Peter Langton. Um, the morning session was with parents, and, in fact, um, Mr. Fiorello, Mrs. Friedman, and Mr. Hess were in attendance. I think it was a really, um, informative session. I had an opportunity to observe the, the process, and it was really helpful for me, um, to, to be a part of that, and I, I learned a lot. Um, and in the afternoon, Mr. Langton facilitated the conversation with the certified staff, and, uh, had an opportunity to, um, be there for most of it, but when they started to get into, um, you know, some of the challenges that they feel that, that they are, um, dealing with, um, as members of the, of, of the staff and of the district, I was asked to leave, so I didn't get a chance to, to see that. But, I did get a chance to see the report, and it, you know, it was really positive. All in all, um, the sessions were really informative, really helpful. I think the process worked really well, and certainly the members of the school committee who are in attendance can, um, speak for themselves, but I think it's a good process. And, I know that there are, um, meetings planned for the future, meetings with students, uh, Dr. Langton will be meeting with the school committee, and I know that there's also a session planned for the community. So, there is still, um, you know, quite a bit of work to be done, but I, I do think that the process that, uh, Dr. Langton is using is an efficient one, and we'll share all of the information, um, with all of you as we move along with that process. Um, we also will be meeting with the, um, the District Strategic Planning Committee. Um, there'll be a meeting scheduled for sometime in December, that is where the, the, um, you know, the District Strategic Planning Committee will review all of the information shared with them and start to, start to make some decisions about pulling the strategic plan together. So, uh, that was one item I wanted to share with you. The other, uh, item is the Later School Start Time Initiative that we are, as you all know, are in the process of studying. We have worked extensively with Durham, our bus company. We have, um, discussed several potential options. We have identified, um, one, that Durham is gonna be, um, giving us a price on, so we'll have at least some idea as to what the potential cost will be. You all will have an opportunity to see, um, the, um, projected start times that Durham is recommending. I think there were four options. Mr. Chandler, Mr. Pignano were involved in that process, and of the four, we were, reached consensus with the bus company, by the way, that, um, one of the options wa, made the most sense and would be the least disruptive, and at the same time, would give us the start time for the high school that we, uh, were looking for. So, in addition to that, we wanna do, um, an independent study. Um, there is a, a line item budgeted, we might not be able to use that money, but, I'm only kidding. Um, we have a, a line item budgeted for an independent study of the school start time. So, we have actually, um, created a, um, an RFP that will be going out within the next few business days, and we hope to, um, get some, uh, interest in some different proposals, um, from individuals or, or consulting firms out there that, that can give us a different perspective on, on, um, what the potential cost will be. And, it's not just, as you all know, it's not just deciding on, you know, what the different start times will be at each of the, at the different grade levels, elementary, middle, and high school. It's also, um, considering educating our constituents. So, students, um, staff, the, the parents, and the community. So, there's a lot of work to be done. Um, everyone that has been involved, I think, and, and who has done an extensive amount of research and looking into this and reading about the advantages of a later school start time, I've said this a million times, and I'll say it again, you know, this is one of those things, the science is clear. You know, and, and as the superintendent, you know, I, I feel a tremendous responsibility to do this because it's the right thing to do. Um, this is one of those things where it's not gonna be easy, but, um, you can't say that it's not the right thing to do. You can say you don't wanna do it, but you can't say it's not the right thing to do. So, one of the things that we understand clearly is, well, hopefully, we can afford to do it, but hopefully, we can help people understand why we need to do it, and that includes everybody. So, I've already, um, had meetings with staff, already had meetings with, um, parents, you know, I had a chance to talk to the PTOs last year. Um, I, I, and, and one of the things that I plan to do is to talk to coaches, so, that, you know, I don't want people to feel as though this is being done to them. I want people to understand why we're doing this, and all of this will be a part of that RFP too, and that planning process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mitchell, if, you had to put a number on it ballpark, would, uh, what are we looking at?
You know, I, I think it's a little premature to, well, you, you know what, I, I don't, I don't wanna speak for Mike or Alex, but my sense initially, and, and again, we're just getting one price from Durham, and we haven't seen that yet, but my, my feeling is that it might be a little less than we anticipated, but, I mean, we were anticipating, you know, 600,000 or more to do this. Um, so, but, you know, I'm, we're, we're hoping that'll be a little less than that.
Forward to seeing the proposals, I'm sure, and putting on the committee is as well.
And just, and just an FYI, uh, for the members of the school committee and the public for that matter, there is, if you Google "school start times," the, generally, the first site that pops up is the Center for Disease Control, and there are a multitude of studies that have been done that, you know, support, um, the need for this, because the bottom line is, our teenagers, specifically, our teenagers aren't getting enough sleep. So, hopefully, you know what, I would be elated if we could, as a district, make this happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Fiorello, do you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Mitchell, uh, I just wanna clarify, when you say that they don't get enough sleep, it's not that they're going to bed too early, uh, too late and then waking up too early, it's more about, uh, the physical body producing melatonin and allowing the body to go to sleep, correct?
There is, there is a physiological, um, need that adolescents, uh, go through. Um, and, and I forget the, the exact, forgive me, I, I've read it many times, but I, I just can't remember the exact biological description for it, but it, it has something to do with their circadian rhythm, right? So, adolescents have a different sleep pattern than we do as adults, and, and the little ones do. And there is, you know, and there is science behind it. So, you know, I, I think one of the things that we need to do is, is, and I will certainly, um, you know, do a little more homework, so I'll be able to respond, um, a little bit, you know, more specifically to a, to a question like that, but there is, there is science behind this, you know, circadian rhythm that adolescents have that requires them to, um, to get at least eight to nine hours of sleep, and studies are showing that they're getting significantly less than that. And the truth is, we're all not getting enough sleep. And one of the most important things that I've learned is that, 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 that the way that the body, specifically the brain, rids, um, itself of toxins is through sleep. So, it, it is critically important, and, and the research is mind-boggling. Just by starting school an hour later, it is amazing, uh, the impact that that has on so many facets of not only teenagers' lives, but adults too. But, you know, we're in the business of educating kids. So, um, there is a tremendous advantage to it. So, you know, again, I, I just think it's one of those issues that we have a responsibility to pursue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mitchell, thank you. Again, I, we look forward to seeing that. Next item on the agenda, Reports of Standing Committees. Payment of Bills, Mr. De Monica.
Mr. Chairman, we did meet upstairs a little while ago, and on the three to zero vote, we voted to approve the payment of bills in the amount of one million, 299,0329.93, and I would move passage.
Thank you, uh, Mr. De Monica. Uh, pleasure of the committee, Mr. De Monica moves passage, payment of bills in the amount of one million, 299,0320, one million, 299,0329.93 cents. Exactly. I have a, uh, motion by Mr. De Monica, I'm sorry, I apologize, and a second by Mr. Denon. All in favor? Ayes have it, seven to zero. Next item on the agenda, Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update.
Mr. Chairman, we, um, did meet tonight upstairs as well. We, um, had a, uh, Business Office Monthly Report from Mr. Pignano. Healthcare is still going at a loss. Right now, it's projected to be over a million dollars, million sixty-three thousand, to be exact, and we will keep an eye on that weekly on regards to the healthcare claims. Um, Sedesco Food Services came in, we're on track with Sedesco for income. And the other thing is, which we will discuss a little bit, excuse me, is a, uh, resolution to buy some math books that were unbudgeted for Eureka Math.
Thank you, Mr. De Monica. Do I have any questions from the committee? All right, next item on the agenda is Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update. Mr. Fiorello?
We have not met since, um, the last meeting, actually, so, we do plan on meeting in December, where we will start taking up, uh, some new policies, as well as some, uh, small amendments to existing policies.
Excellent, glad to hear, Mr. Fiorello, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Achievement and Communication Subcommittee Update. Mr. Denon?
Mr. Chair, we're a brand-new committee. We have three brand-new members we haven't met yet, and I'll work with you to, uh, schedule a, a meeting.
Excellent. Mr. Denon, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Comments From the Public. Anybody in the public like to step up to the podium? Moving forward, the next item on the agenda is New Business. Discussion and/or Vote to Approve Resolution SC PR 11-2016-15, Grades 1 Through 8 Math Unit Workbooks and Manuels. Pleasure of the committee.
Chairman.
Mr. De Monica.
We did meet tonight over this, um, this is to buy, uh, books for Eureka Math. The vendor, um, has left this off their list and changed the way the packages were put together. The school district needs to buy these items for the, uh, Eureka Math Program. The amount is 25,924.65 to, for the imprint Moran of Baton Rouge, Louisiana. It is not budgeted in this year's budget. The business The business office is hoping or is expecting to make budget transfers later on during the school year to cover the costs for this, for these supplies. Some of the items will, the money will come out of the, each school's budget for math material. And it did pass upstairs, three to zero, wanted some discussion, and I would move the passage.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Mr. Demodica is moving passage. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess. All in favor? Eyes have it. Seven to zero. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve the homeschool instruction request for the 2016-17 school year.
There were none this evening, Mr. Chairman.
This evening. Mr. Mitchell. Next item, so there'll be no vote taken. Next item on the agenda is Personnel Recommendations. Mrs. Vogel.
Good evening. So I have some personnel recommendations for you this evening. We'll start with resignation. I have two. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the resignation of Christine Boulis, classroom paraprofessional in the Success Program at BF Norton Elementary School effective November 14th of 2016. And also Caitlin Turcot, speech-language pathologist at Community School and Cumberland Hill Elementary School effective November 8th, 2016.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Vogel. Do I have, pleasure of the committee.
Chairman, make a motion we approve.
Mr. Demodica is making a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorello. All in favor? Eyes have it. Seven to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Vogel.
Thank you. I also have some certified staff appointments. So I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the appointment of Kristy Cipriano, school nurse teacher at Ashton Elementary School effective November 28th, 2016. She would be a full-time Step 10, and she's actually here in the audience. And I also have Mark Sprague, speech-language pathologist at Community School and Cumberland Hill Elementary School effective December 5th, 2016. He also is full-time, full-time in Step 10. Both positions are budgeted. And obviously, the second appointment is due to the resignation from the last motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Vogel. Pleasure of the committee. A motion by Mr. Denon. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorello. All in favor? Eyes have it. Seven to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Vogel.
And lastly, I have the coaching appointments. So they were in your drive. I don't know if you can read them all. I'll go through them. So Boys Varsity Basketball at CHS, Gary Reedy. Boys JV Basketball at CHS, Kyle Landry. Girls Varsity Basketball at CHS, George Codier. Girls JV Basketball at CHS, Andrea Harnoyz. Cheerleading at CHS, Rachel Powell. Hockey at CHS, Mark Andreozzi. Hockey Assistant Coach at CHS, Jonathan Paquin. Boys Varsity Indoor Track, Thomas Kenwood. Boys Indoor Track Assistant Coach, Jalen Young. Girls Varsity Indoor Track, Vanessa Malloy. Girls Indoor Track Assistant Coach, Josh Lima. Swim at Cumberland High School, Roderick McGarry. Weight room supervisor, Gabrielle Gonzalez. Wrestling at CHS, Steve Gordon. Wrestling Assistant at CHS, Colin Smith. Boys Basketball at McCourt Middle School, Austin Silva. Boys Basketball at North Cumberland Middle School, John Madden. Girls Basketball at McCourt Middle School, Brandon Hanaway. Girls Basketball at North Cumberland Middle School, David DeJesus. Wrestling at McCourt Middle School, Andrew Givens. And Wrestling at North Cumberland Middle School, Stephen Gorman. And just for a note, all of the coaches are returning except for the three that were starred on your agenda. Those are new appointments, and you have their applications in your drive.
Mrs. Vogel, thank you. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Demodica. Please.
Mrs. Vogel, the three new ones, they're all certified?
Yes, they are.
I would make a motion we approve.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Has a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorello. All in favor? Eyes have it. Seven to zero. Next item on the, thank you, Mrs. Vogel. Next item on the agenda is the School Committee Comments. School Liaison Reports. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Demodica.
I want to welcome our new members. It's all about the children, and that's it. And good luck. And, you have questions? See you, Alex. No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Mr. Fiorello. I'd also like to welcome our new members. I'd also like to mention that we have on Monday the Cumberland Special Education Advisory Committee meeting at the Public Library in the Hayden Center at 6:30? Six o'clock? And I'd like to recognize that Mrs. Kavanaugh, that one of the co-chairs of the CAC is here tonight. We had a great turnout at the last meeting, and we hope to keep it going like that.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Oh, please, go.
I'd also like to just say that I've gotten to know Mrs. Boulis from her time at BF Norton as a paraprofessional in the Success Room. It's a tough job some days, and she's always done it with a smile on her face. And she's always been very willing to help out in other parts of the school. She will be missed.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. I, last week, or, yes, last week, I attended, I'm sorry, I was on vacation last week, so it's all a little weird. I attended the Business Advisory Meeting. That was an excellent meeting. And I actually was able to attend a demo within the robotics program. And I encourage anyone on this committee to reach out via through Mr. Mitchell to attend the robotics lab and take a look at what they're doing down there. It's pretty amazing. We got a lot of good stuff going on. And that's all I have for Liaison Reports. And sticking with procedure. We need a vote. Well, we need, we have executive session tonight, right, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session. If items are referred in the Rhode Island General Laws, 42-46-5. Before going into executive session, I apologize, first meeting. Bear with me. I'll get it down in the second one. Before going into executive session, the school committee shall state for the record that any persons to be discussed pursuant to subsection one have been notified and this statement shall be noted in the minutes of the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Denon. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorello. All in favor? Eyes have it. So we're in an executive session. So we're going to reconvene out of this room, and then we're going to come back to close out the meeting, correct?